Okay, why don't we get started? We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we want to call this meeting to order. This will be a public hearing for three charter schools tonight, but can I just get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Okay, great. So we'll just go straight to our public hearings and we'll start with the new charter petition for the San Diego Global Vision Academy. Superintendent Kova?
Thank you, President Barrera. As you know, we have an enthusiastic audience. And we do have three charter issues. One is, the very first one is CO1, which is a new charter petition for San Diego Global Vision Academy, and followed by two renewals. And in each case, I'm going to ask Dr. Burks to set the table for us. So Tony, over to you, please.
And I'm sorry, Superintendent and Dr. Burks, could we maybe take public comment first on these issues and then we'll go through it? So we've got Evangelina Pinera, Michael Evans, Beverly Dumas, and Lisa Berlanga. Anybody ready? Please come forward.
I don't speak English very well. She...
Translator.
Yeah.
We have a translator.
Oh, gracias. Ah, gracias.
Okay. Estamos... Estamos aquí.
We are here.
My family and I.
My family and I.
Para dar apoyo.
To support.
A nuestros maestros.
Our teachers.
En su nueva escuela.
In their new school.
Que tenemos muchos años de conocerlos.
And we've known them for many years.
Como personas.
As people.
Y maestros.
And as teachers.
Son lo mejor de lo mejor.
They are the best of the best.
Ellos han dado educación a mis cinco hijos.
They've taught my five children.
Y quiero que continúen haciéndolo.
And I want them to continue doing so.
Es por eso, por lo que estamos aquí.
That is why we are here today.
Apoyándolos en sus nuevas expectativas.
To support them in their new expectations.
Y los amo.
And we love, and I love them.
Son los favoritos.
They're my favorite.
Son mis favoritos.
They're my favorite.
Gracias. Espero que ellos nos den su apoyo para ellos.
Thank you, and I hope that you can give us your support for them.
Gracias.
Yes, my name is Michael Evans, and I'm one of the parents that's here to support the teachers that are trying to form the new school because I actually feel that this global vision concept is a great idea. And I've known the teachers in the community and in the school for the past four years, and I think they're a very bright and wonderful group that's totally behind the children. And the concept, it just seems that it's going to be something that's going to be able to make it viable for the kids to be able to be a real viable part to the future. I endorse them 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
My name is Beverly Dumas, and I'm a parent here to support SDGVA. My son Brandon has been taught by two of the teachers here today, and I can't say enough about the level of professionalism and strong desires of those teachers to promote and challenge the students to excel beyond their own expectations. The vision that they have is not just locally here for the community, but globally for the world. I can see through my experience of the past three years that their desire is to teach the kids to be leaders of the community and of the world.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, President Barrera, Superintendent Kova, board members. I'm Lisa Berlanga with the California Charter Schools Association, and I'm very pleased tonight to offer support of San Diego Global Visions Academy. This petition is coming to you from a group of very experienced educators. The founding group have all been teachers, most at charter schools, most have served on boards of charter schools. They've been involved in various things like the Writing Project and other educational opportunities, and they bring all of their experience together in this charter petition. The group came to us about a year ago to begin the work on this petition. They joined our charter launch program, which is an intensive, year-long program that they've been developing their petition and their program during this time. So they started with us. They came to workshops on educational philosophy, on goals and assessment, on governance, on how to develop your staff. And with each workshop, they'd come, they'd get information, and the group of founders would sit and work together on this petition. When the petition was done, being drafted, it was thoroughly reviewed by a group of folks from the association, so it's been vetted by us. They put a lot of work, a lot of months, a lot of time into this petition, and we hope that you'll see that in the document that you have in front of you. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, Dr. Burks, please.
All right, thank you, thank you. As you know, the California Education Code requires that the district hold public hearings to consider both new and renewal charter petitions. And as Superintendent Kova has pointed out, we have three such for you. The first, of course, is for a new charter school, and the remaining two are for renewals. The petitioners for the San Diego Global Vision Academy Charter School are seeking a charter petition for the 2010, '11 academic year and beyond. This petition is currently being reviewed by our staff, and once representatives from the various departments have had opportunity to review the petition and offer feedback, we will then present any concerns or requests for additional information to the petitioners. They will have the opportunity to respond to those and add information. And as you know, this item is presented to you for your information only. We will return at a later date with the petition for board action.
So I guess, do we have any board questions or comments on the petition?
I don't have any this time.
Okay, Mr. Deback?
No.
None? None? Okay. So I think we're good for now on the next one. Yeah. I think we're good for now on this item.
We await the staff, you know, the staff's report on finances, curriculum, and all those things, the hearings.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so thank you, everybody, for supporting the Global Vision Academy. You're welcome to stay, but we're moving on to the next item now? So, yes.
The group does have a presentation to present. I don't know if you, they've prepared a presentation. I don't know if you want to listen to that or not.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Tina Clark, and I'm a founding member of the San Diego Global Vision Academy. Thank you for inviting us, allowing us to speak on behalf of the school that's initiated by the community members and the educators with a common goal of creating a national prominent elementary school. If you are here to support SDGVA, please stand. As you can see, the community stands here today in blue to show their support for the acceptance of SDGVA's charter petition into the San Diego Unified School District. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce to you some of SDGVA's founding members, who will highlight how our school will provide opportunities and make positive contributions through service learning projects for students who otherwise would be limited due to their family, community, and cultural barriers.
My name is Kim Dullard. I'm here as a board member of SDGVA, and I'm talking about the role writing plays in this school curriculum. Writing as a centerpiece of instruction offers students tools and processes for increased understanding and integration of learning across content areas. The needs of a democratic society and requirements of the workforce bring with them a demand for effective writing. An informed citizenry must understand the ways language works in order to read critically and communicate effectively. Beyond being able to read and comprehend documents such as legal contracts, advertising messages, and political materials, citizens must also have knowledge of the ways documents are composed and the expectations and requirements for those particular documents if they are to read them critically and understand the subtleties they contain. This kind of knowledge comes from opportunities to explore and wrestle with language so that it can be utilized not only by an elite few, but also by the society as a whole. Writing offers these opportunities in ways not available through reading. Writers must manipulate language, understand structures and their demands, as well as anticipate the needs of the reader in order to communicate clearly and effectively. Writing beyond its communicative purposes also serves as a vehicle for abstract and analytical thinking, allowing the writer to clarify and organize thoughts and generate ideas.
Christine Kane, founding member. SDGVA believes that access to high-quality educational experience is a basic right of all learners and a cornerstone of equity. This educational philosophy, founded upon guiding principles of the National Writing Project, recognizes that writing in its many forms is a signature means of communication in the 21st century. SDGVA believes in the professionalism of teachers. As professionals, we have made a commitment to work closely with our local site of the National Writing Project for professional development purposes. Independent national scorings of student writing show that students of teachers who have participated in the Summer Leadership Institutes for Writing at National Writing Project sites far outperform students, those students, in carefully constructed comparison groups. Writing through all content areas, including mathematics, science, and social studies, will provide students the foundation to become accomplished writers, engaged learners, and active participants in a digital interconnected world.
Hello, my name is Asia Booker, and I'm also a founding member. Service learning is a dynamic process through which students' personal and social growth is tightly interwoven into their academic and cognitive development. According to scholars Iler and Giles, with the service learning model, experience enhances understanding, understanding leads to more effective action. SDGVA will utilize service learning as a teaching strategy that enables, excuse me, that engages students by making education relevant. Our SDGVA service learning curriculum and professional development model has been created by a founding member who is certified as a service learning consultant and professional development coordinator by Volunteer San Diego. SDGVA's service learning curriculum for grades K through 6 has been modified for elementary students from three existing California standards-based curricular programs, including Peace Jam Juniors, Kids for Peace, and the Points of Light Youth Leadership Institute. Due to our elementary student population, great consideration will be taken to utilize age-appropriate service learning projects that foster the physical, mental, and emotional welfare of our students.
Hello, Valentina Banner, founding member. Service learning is a teaching tool that allows students to develop the internal assets necessary for becoming responsible adults who contribute to our global society. More specialized than just community service, service learning involves applying classroom learning through investigation of a community problem, planning ways to solve it, action through service, reflection on the experience and what was learned, and demonstration of results. Participation in service learning projects creates leaders who take initiative, solve problems, work as a team, and demonstrate their abilities while and through helping others. Service learning also functions to improve academic achievement, as evidenced from Orange County's Access Program, where 87% of the students achieved proficiency in the standards taught through service learning projects. The Growing to Greatness Study of 2007 found that over 85% of principals from U.S. schools with service learning programs reported a positive impact on students' civic and school engagement, school climate, and teacher satisfaction. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Cheryl Kathy Edge. I'm a board member of SDGVA. I'm also a community member, which is why I'm here, because I live within a half a mile of four elementary schools, and I felt it necessary to take my child out of the community to attend school. And I truly believe that we need an SDGVA in our communities so that other parents like myself that are concerned don't have to leave the community. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amy Wilson. I'm a community board member. I'm here on behalf of SDGVA because this is a school that we need in our community. The teachers and administrators of this school not only work very hard with the children, but they work very hard with the parents as well to make sure that we all understand what's going on in this day of age in education. Also, I want to talk about the Taekwondo program that we want to incorporate into the school. It teaches self-control, self-discipline, and self-esteem, and that's one of the main reasons that the students that we take care of now are so successful, is because they know how to control themselves and defend others and of all of their self-esteem. So, thank you.
My name is Deena Harris, and I'm the lead petitioner on this charter. For the past year, I've been working with this group to secure the Walt Family Foundation Grant. We are in the third final implementation grant for the $250,000. With the money that we've received, we've hired Paul Mini for our legal services, an ex-ed who specializes in charter finance.
And in closing, I just want to say thank you again for taking the time and consideration to review through the San Diego Global Vision Academy's petition, and we look forward to working with San Diego Unified School District.
Thank you. And Ms. Ward, would it be helpful if we asked everybody to fill out a speaker slip? Yeah. Oh, you've got it. Yeah, great.
Great, we'll make sure to do that. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Okay, Mr. Deback, you?
Yeah, I was very interested in reviewing this. I hope that you focus on the actual achievement goals that you outline in pages 25 on, because when you come back, that's the stuff I'll ask about. You know, it's, the delivery system, it sounds very interesting and fascinating, and, you know, I'm not going to argue pros or cons on service learning or not.
Correct.
The bottom line is what you said in your petition about what would happen for student achievement. That's, and I, you know, your method of delivering that is why you're a charter.
Correct.
But the issue is, when you come back, that's the kind of questions I'm going to ask, is what happened to the kids? Now, the one you said about kindergarten kids achieving better than they did when they walked in, that's a given. You know what? I'll give you that one right now. But when you said about the fifth graders doing certain amounts of work in comparison to district schools like yours, now, that's the stuff I'm going to talk about. So, you know, and I think that would be true if I was talking about the renewals as well, because some of these renewals are not talking about achievement. But I will be asking the same questions of them, and I will be asking the same questions of you.
All right. We'll be ready.
And I'll be here to ask them.
Okay, sounds good. We'll look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Okay, let's move on then to item CO2, and we've got one public speaker, Abdul Kader Mohammed.
My name is Abdul Kader Mohammed. I'm director of Iftin Charter School. Dear respective school board members and members of the public, Iftin Charter School is in the fourth year of operation during the last three and a half years. Iftin Charter School has proven it is as a caring, safe center of learning. We're providing small class size and helping families with the service and support necessary for student success in school and in community at large. Iftin has high qualified teachers, are caring, dedicated to the education of each of our students. We are committed to provide our students with the core and basic of solid education, including the knowledge, skills, habits, ideals that will serve as foundation of learning and good character throughout their lives. Iftin's 2009 ABI score is 63 points higher than its basic score in 2007. Iftin Charter School understands that we will serve as a trustee of the public. In these tight economic times, we have shown responsible and prudent financial management. Iftin Charter School has a solid and stable financial future. And I appreciate for your time to review our petition renewal and to approve in future. And thank you very much for your time with the Charter School Office Group, Dr. Tony and his group, and I appreciate everybody in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Mr. Burks, do you want to talk?
As you may recall, Iftin Charter School was granted their first and only charter term on January 11, 2005. The current charter term expires June 30, 2010. The school is seeking a charter renewal term through 2014, '15 academic year. The school currently offers K-8 grade span and is located at the former Jackson School Site located on El Cajon Boulevard. The renewal charter petition, as are the others, are being reviewed by staff. Once representatives from the various departments have offered their perspectives and their feedback about the document, we will present the petitioners from Iftin with any concerns or areas that need to be clarified, and then they will, of course, have the opportunity to address each concern. And once again, as you know, this is presented for your information only. We will return with the petition to the board for action at a later date.
Mr. Deback?
Sure, thank you. I'll review this very briefly, but I have two concerns, and I already mentioned one to the people that are applying for their new charter. But I saw in the document on page 25 and there around that there were statements regarding student achievement, and it would be measured, but there is no data that supports the performance of the charter for the last few years. So one of the issues for me would be, if I'm renewing a charter, I would expect them to show me performance data that, you know, either in comparison to other similar schools or comparison with what they stated in their first application. If I was to hold you for what you say in this application, I have nothing to hold you for, because there's no stated student achievement goals within it. You say you're going to be measuring them on a various variety of different things, like the state performance standards and all that, but what you don't say is how well you'll do on those. Okay? And that's critical. I mean, you may say we'll do better than what, and I don't know that. So that's, concern one is achievement data and projected results that you would expect for your population. Now, I'm going to the second one, which you did mention within your petition about it not being a Somali school or, you know. I don't have a problem with the question of that, except I don't have any enrollment data at all. So I can't see if you have, from the time you started till now, let's say, done some kind of productive outreach to include the different populations that are available to you in East San Diego. You know, it's true, you have Hispanic population, you have Somali population, you have Vietnamese population, you have a number of people within the East San Diego, I'll call it, community, but I have no data to show that you have changed from the time you started to now or that you have any projected goals for changing in the next five years. So for me, those two issues are critical issues for the renewal thing. It may be that you can't prove anything that you've done in the last few years, but you sure as heck can set goals for the coming years. So then, when the time comes that we face each other five years from now, well, I'll be here still, then I'll be asking that question, okay, what happened? And if the answer is nothing, then I'm not going to be as favorable as I would be, because I would expect you to make some progress in that regard. So that said, you know, I think you've, every startup charter has its own problems, but I think the problem that came up in the beginning about this was whether it was a, I'll call it, a culture-bound charter wrapped around a certain group of people. And by the way, whoever sent me the books that have been published in the community regarding the experiences of Somalis in our community and elsewhere, I do appreciate those. I did read that book that lady wrote from all the way through, and my wife read it, and we enjoyed it thoroughly.
Yeah.
So thanks for that. We got a lot to learn, and that's a good way to get it. But you also, I think, need to understand that we need to see something happening for your children. Thank you.
Jackson? So we'll move on to item CO3. We've got speakers Joel Christman, Pedro Motá, Robert Riles, Jonathan Sines. I think there is a couple more too. Can also call up Ann Sines and Cambia Davis.
Mr. Barrera, fellow board members, thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Joel Christman. I am the principal at Keeler Leadership Academy. We're a school in the Hamishaw area. Some of you have visited our school, and thank you. Tonight, we're happy to present to you just some of our, the different stakeholders that are at Keeler. We're going to use our mission statement as our theme, and I wanted to tell you that Keeler Leadership Academy, we're talking about achievement, in the four, four and a half years we've been in as a charter, we've raised our API 82 points. We are working very hard to make sure that our students are leaders in the community once they leave our school, and that's kind of, that's what our mission statement is all about. Tonight, you're going to hear from a couple of people from our school, and hopefully you'll enjoy what you hear. Pedro?
Hello, my name is Pedro Motá, and I am a former KLA student, along with a former ASB president of Keeler Leadership Academy. KLA has helped me in, by them providing the necessary skills in order to become a leader. They've helped me through ASB and through numerous other ways, and I am happy to say that today because of that. I am at a high school, a Lincoln High School, and I am the commissioner of human and public relations. And tomorrow, actually, I will have my first blood drive that I will be conducting and ordering with the American Red Cross. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Pedro.
Hi, my name is Cambia Davis, and my address is 1365 Avenue Del Churro. So what I'm going to be talking about is part of our mission statement talks about, we, staff members, we value quality education. So I'm actually a seventh grade pre-algebra and algebra teacher at KLA, and what that means to us is that we place education as a priority, number one priority at our KLA, and we value quality education. So we have a variety of programs at KLA. One of the programs that we have is the after-school math program, and this is offered for grades six, seventh, eighth grade. It's three days a week, and it's for an hour, and we work with students and giving them the extra support they need to be successful in their math classes. We, I actually am a MESA advisor at KLA for the seventh, eighth grade students, and this is an after-school math program for math and science. MESA stands for Mathematics, Engineering, Science Achievement. And the first hour is just the students working on math problems, supporting...
Iftin's 2009 ABI score is 63 points higher than this basic score in 2007. Iftin Charter School understands that we serve as a trustee of the public. In this tight economic times, we have shown responsible and prudent financial management. Iftin Charter School has a solid and stable financial future. And I appreciate for your time to review our petition renewal and to approve in future. And thank you very much for your time with the Charter School Office Group, Dr. Tony and his group, and I appreciate everybody in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohammed. Mr. Berks, do you want to talk?
As you may recall, Iftin Charter School was granted their first and only charter term on January 11, 2005. The current charter term expires June 30, 2010. The school is seeking a charter renewal term through 2014-15 academic year. The school currently offers K-8 grade span and is located at the former Jackson School site located on El Cajon Boulevard. The renewal charter petition, as are the others, are being reviewed by staff, once representatives from the various departments have offered their perspectives and their feedback about the document. We will present the petitioners from Iftin with any concerns or areas that need to be clarified, and then they will, of course, have the opportunity to address each concern. And once again, as you know, this is presented for your information only. We will return with the petition to the board for action at a later date.
Mr. DeBak?
Sure, thank you. I'll review this very briefly, but I have two concerns, and I already mentioned one to the people that are applying for their new charter. But I saw in the document on Page 25 and there around that there were statements regarding student achievement, and it would be measured, but there is no data that supports the performance of the charter for the last few years. So, one of the issues for me would be if I'm renewing a charter, I would expect them to show me performance data that, you know, either in comparison to other similar schools or comparison with what they stated in their first application. If I was to hold you for what you say in this application, I have nothing to hold you for, because there's no stated student achievement goals within it. You say you're going to be measuring them on a various variety of different things like the state performance standards and all that, but what you don't say is how well you'll do on those, okay? And that's critical. I mean, you may say we'll do better than what, and I don't know that. So, that's concern one is achievement data and projected results that you would expect for your population. Now, I'm going to the second one, which you did mention within your petition about it not being a Somali school or, you know. I don't have a problem with the question of that, except I don't have any enrollment data at all. So, I can't see if you have, from the time you started till now, let's say, done some kind of productive outreach to include the different populations that are available to you in East San Diego. You know, it's true, you have Hispanic population, you have Somali population, you have Vietnamese population, you have a number of people within the East San Diego, I'll call it, community. But I have no data to show that you have changed from the time you started to now or that you have any projected goals for changing in the next five years. So, for me, those two issues are critical issues for the renewal thing. It may be that you can't prove anything that you've done in the last few years, but you sure as heck can set goals for the coming years. So, then when the time comes that we face each other five years from now, well, I'll be here still, then I'll be asking that question, okay, what happened? And if the answer is nothing, then I'm not going to be as favorable as I would be, because I would expect you to make some progress in that regard. So, that said, you know, I think every startup charter has its own problems, but I think the problem that came up in the beginning about this was whether it was a, I'll call it, a culture-bound charter wrapped around a certain group of people. And by the way, whoever sent me the books that have been published in the community regarding the experiences of Somalis in our community and elsewhere, I do appreciate those. I did read that book that lady wrote from all the way through, and my wife read it, and we enjoyed it thoroughly.
Yeah.
So, thanks for that. We've got a lot to learn, and that's a good way to get it. But you also, I think, need to understand that we need to see something happening for your children. Thank you.
Jackson? So, we'll move on to Item CO3. We've got speakers Joel Christman, Pedro Mota, Robert Riles, Jonathan Sines.
I think there is a couple more too.
Can also call up Ann Sines and Cambia Davis.
Mr. Barrera, fellow board members, thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Joel Christman. I am the principal at Keeler Leadership Academy. We're a school in the Hamishaw area. Some of you have visited our school, and thank you. Tonight, we're happy to present to you just some of the different stakeholders that are at Keeler. We're going to use our mission statement as our theme, and I wanted to tell you that Keeler Leadership Academy, we're talking about achievement, in the four and a half years we've been as a charter, we've raised our API 82 points. We are working very hard to make sure that our students are leaders in the community once they leave our school, and that's what our mission statement is all about. Tonight, you're going to hear from a couple of people from our school, and hopefully you'll enjoy what you hear. Pedro?
Hello, my name is Pedro Mota, and I am a former KLA student, along with a former ASB president of Keeler Leadership Academy. KLA has helped me by them providing the necessary skills in order to become a leader. They've helped me through ASB and through numerous other ways, and I'm happy to say that today because of that. I am at a high school, a Lincoln High School, and I am the commissioner of human and public relations. And tomorrow, actually, I will have my first blood drive that I will be conducting and ordering with the American Red Cross. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Pedro.
Hi, my name is Cambia Davis, and my address is 1365 Avenue Del Charo. So, what I'm going to be talking about is part of our mission statement talks about we, staff members, we value quality education. So, I'm actually a seventh-grade pre-algebra and algebra teacher at KLA, and what that means to us is that we place education as a priority, number-one priority at our KLA, and we value quality education. So, we have variety of programs at KLA. One of the programs that we have is the after-school math program, and this is offered for grades six, seventh, eighth grade. It's three days a week, and it's for an hour, and we work with students and give them the extra support they need to be successful in their math classes. I actually am a Mesa advisor at KLA for the seventh, eighth grade students, and this is an after-school math program for math and science. Mesa stands for Mathematics, Engineering, Science, Achievement. And the first hour is just the students working on math problems, supporting each other. For Mesa, there is a solo math competition they go to and a math team quest, so the students really work hard together and working together as a team. We also have tutoring in all content areas Tuesday through Friday every single day, and we also have Sire Academy, which helps our students who are on that cusp to do very well in the CST, just giving that extra boost they need to be successful. We also have a variety of assessments that we do, which will be talked about later. We do mock testing December and March every single year. We have Scantron testing. We have pre- and post-assessments, and we actually have midterm and final exams. I've been at KLA for three years, and I can tell you that my CST scores have increased in algebra and pre-algebra. So, I'm very happy to be at KLA, and if you have any questions, just let me know. Thank you very much for your time.
Good afternoon. I'm Robert Riles. I'm a board member and a teacher at Keeler Leadership Academy. And the part of our mission statement that I wanted to address today is we talk about our students becoming contributing members of our diverse community. When they reach their maximum potential, they can positively, or we believe that they can positively impact whomever they are around in our community. And what we do at Keeler Leadership Academy is we provide a well-rounded education. We include electives. We have a music elective, an art elective, and a media production elective. They produce their own news program in that media production elective. We also are starting our own internet radio station. Our electives department also has an emphasis on writing. That's very important at our school. I'd also just like to say that all the teachers at our school are really dedicated to our students and our parents and our learning community there at Keeler. So, thank you.
To sum up, the mission of Keeler Leadership Academy is to create student leaders who value quality education and embrace their role as a contributing member of our diverse community. Thank you for hearing us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Christman. And we've got Jonathan and Ann Sines. Not here.
They are not here.
Okay. Terrific. Great. Mr. DeBak?
Thank you. Well, again, I go back to my, I'll call it, broken record. I'm looking on Page 19 where you have element two, student outcomes. And I know you must have been listening to earlier things, and you told me what the results were all verbally. The two of you said something about performance, but there is no information in this about the difference between the outcomes you stated in your original application and your actual performance. I'm aware Keeler made some improvements. I'm not arguing that. But the point is, the application should stand on its own, and I think it's an element in the reporting of a renewal of a charter that you show where you were when you started and the progress you've made over the time. That's not within this document, and it's something that I want to keep repeating that I would like to see as charters come up for renewal. So, you know, it says students, in fact, if you look at this student outcome, students that, well, meter exceeds California State Content Improvement Standards in the areas of English and Language Arts. That's what you say you will do in five years, but did you say this five years ago? And if you did, how far did you get? Or did you actually achieve it? There's no statement in this document that says you did it. And I think one of the criteria for a board in renewing charters is the benchmark versus the performance and whether or not we can say something happened. The statement that something happened, good, is okay, but the documentation of that is even better. So, you know, I'm not saying I think you're not telling the truth or anything like that, but I'd like to see it in the document that, and I'm not just speaking to Keeler, I mean everyone. Okay, so now I go to the next piece, which is the element of what I call racial balance, and I asked the question earlier. Keeler has a certain, I'll call it, residential population surrounding it, and one of the things that I strongly would believe is if they're achieving well as a charter, they would be attracting maybe people from other places to their school, and there would be some evidence that there had been some improvements in the racial balance or not. But see, there isn't any evidence in here that you have anything like that going on. And maybe, I'm only speaking for myself, when I'm up here, I'm not talking board policy, I'm talking how I feel, so let them figure what they want. But my take on this is that I think all of our cultures benefit by interreacting, and that, you know, way back when Carlin hit and when we had the issue of whether or not we were racially isolated, I don't literally like, from my point of view, to see us ignore the demographic makeup of our schools and whether or not it's changed over time. And I think that would be, for me at least, an important thing to see as I look at this charter renewal, you know? And, you know, you do represent a community, so I would expect that you would represent the community's residential population, but that might be a reason to say, let's attract some folks that aren't like the rest of this community. You know, I'm not going to go there. But I think that would be progress. I think that would be evidence of a worthwhile activity and part of a charter, is that they drew people that were maybe different than their communities together and, you know, had a factor of improving race, human relations, as you want to say. So, those are my two concerns, again, but I still, I come down heavy always on performance. If I can't see performance, and I only hear, "We're doing a good thing," and "We got a new radio station," and all that, nothing against that, but that's all the whistles and bells, but what I'm looking for is the bottom line, which is student achievement. And I'll be here to see you.
Dr. Evans?
I just want to support Mr. DeBak's comments about, and this is for all of the charter renewals and applications, well, the renewals in this case that we're looking at in terms of some real clear data on what you've been able to accomplish. And I'm sure that in both of these schools, a lot has been accomplished, and so it's really, really important to quantify that. I know there's some reference to meeting state standards through certain tests and so forth, and one of the things that we're working on, on the board and the district, is really looking at how we measure success. And I'm also open to you using other measures that you have developed yourself, but some sort of way to demonstrate exactly what has been accomplished at these schools, so that I think that then you will really be able to be given the credit that you are due for what you are most likely already accomplishing.
Any further comments, Ms. Nagamor?
No.
Okay.
Just too bad.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody. Our meeting is adjourned.
Do we need to go upstairs?
We do.
All right.